The celebration, but I know if Kelly were, Kelly were sitting right next to him instead of being virtually, she would say, Mayor, let's get this, let's get this meeting started. So let's get it started. Mayor, I mean, Mrs. Clerk, can you please read the role?
You got it. Mr. Bowden?
Here.
Mr. Nichols?
Here.
Mr. Amos?
Here.
Mr. Childs?
Here.
Mr. Brighter?
Here.
Mr. Wilder?
Here.
Mr. Fley?
Here.
All right. Thank you. And I think if anything, if any way we get disconnected, I think Mr. Marty Peterson is there to step in somehow. So we'll do the best we can and hopefully we won't be disconnected. But could you please join me in a moment of silence? All right. Thank you. And I guess I have the pledge this evening. So please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Could I have a motion for the agenda in minutes?
All right.
Mr. Fley is.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the and the minutes of the February 2022 regular session as proposed.
Second.
All right. So that motion has been made to approve the agenda and the minutes from February 21st, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. First up is public comments, and I believe we have Mr. Bogey that would like to make some comments to the council. So please step up, state your name and address for the record.
Hi. My name is Jason Bogey. I live at 2141 Logan Avenue, Unit Number Five. The reason why I came here to speak tonight is to address the abatement issues that are forthcoming with Marty heading that up. So I prepared my speech here. I try to cut it down. So anyway, I've had some interesting situations take place with Waterloo rental home inspector, city planner, the mayor, DA, city attorney, a few councilperson constituents, and I've also contacted legal aid, human rights commissioner, human rights advocate, police officers, Iowa Nebraska Housing Rental Authority, as well as many others from the city. I've reached out to the above-mentioned professionals to get help with my landlord. He, in my opinion, is a very wealthy owning, man owning several properties, a construction company, and he has ties to the city of Waterloo. I wish there could be an audit of the treatment I have received from many key people. I feel they're protecting him. My landlord has refused to fix the shower and his head and the carpet clean professionally, which he promised me he would do on December 28th of last year, approximately 1:00. After I painted and cleaned and made many repairs because I care, the landlord came in on that Saturday to inspect and reimburse me for my labor and materials with a check from Farmer State Bank. The landlord and his wife had tried to illegally evict and oust me at that time. I told him and his wife this was retaliation. I served them with a notice of repairs needing his attention that same day. I showed the document to a few of the previously mentioned professionals. I will add, the well water was contaminated, tested by Blackhawk County Water Testing Expert. When the landlord hired plumbing service to come shock the well with liquid bleach and bleach pellets, the landlord nor the plumbing service notified the other renters as, as the well was shocked and do not drink the water for at least 20, 48 to 72 hours. He didn't notify anyone. This was another neglected, misduty carried out by the landlord. The well water was brown and left a film on the toilet bowl for a few days. I'm here now this afternoon to represent thousands of tenants who rent from landlords like my landlord, who do not take responsibility seriously to fix internal household items and external household items. The landlord is supposed to do this. Excuse me, I got off track here. I've given landlord estimates for a shower that is rusted out. The shower's probably older than myself. The landlord is supposed to do this, not myself, and he tries to spin the truth and so on and so forth. I've lived in this unit for two months, and I've heard abundance of misrepresentations by landlords, and he's still trying to twist things and put it back on me. So please, I'm asking you and the DA to help tenants with similar situations like mine to pass the abatement laws, Chapter Nine, Title Seven, to assist, assist me and thousands of other voters who face conditions like this on a day-to-day basis. Please do the right thing for a decent law-abiding individuals and families who are trying to save money, who want to purchase their own home. I will add, other renters are trying to be responsible citizens and contribute to the Waterloo tax base as well. In my opinion, it's smarter to own than to rent, to avoid situations like I have stated earlier. In closing, thank you for your time and listening, and please vote yes for the abatement changes to protect all citizens who currently rent. And I just wanted to bring to light that code enforcement in other counties like Polk County or Cedar Rapids have a pretty good program. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to address the City Council on non-agenda-related items?
Mayor, we did have a second registered speaker. That would be Tony B.
Yes, sir.
Hi. My name is Tony Beeth, and I'm here representing Beeth Realty to respond to Mr. Bogey's previous remarks. In the two months since January 1st that Mr. Bogey has been living on the property, the following improvements have been completed per his request. Weather stripping, electrical repairs, the hole he cut in the floor to remove a soft spot was repaired and flooring replaced, new toilet, valves, plumbing, new refrigerator, painting, door sweep, new smoke alarms and fire extinguishers. The amount spent so far has been $8,603. I have invoices for viewing if so desired. The original contractor I hired to repair the floor and the hole politely requested to not do any more work replacing the shower due to Mr. Bogey creating a repair list a mile long, demanding unauthorized repairs and making him, making the contractor feel uncomfortable. Second contractor, Young's Plumbing and Heating, provided an estimate for the shower work, but canceled after Mr. Bogey spoke with the project scheduler, was insulting to her, accusatory of her, and made very clear to her how upset he was about them coming to do the work. One of the owners of this company called me to let me know how upset his employee was after this conversation had brought her to tears. A third contractor, All-Star Plumbing, sent a letter stating they would no longer work at Mr. Bogey's duplex due to his demeanor, constant messaging, and calling his employees at all hours of the night on their personal cell phones, demanding work be done, harassed their office manager, threatening the landlord and the rest of their staffs if his calls weren't returned. There are several other contractors with complaints about Mr. Bogey, but due to time restraints, I'll spare the council and the mayor the drama. He has bothered every tenant living on that property, and his next-door neighbor moved out after living there peacefully for several years due to Mr. Bogey pressuring her into signing a petition and making her feel uncomfortable. He pressured the rest of the tenants to sign his petition, but they all refused.
Yeah, Mr. V, I think we kind of get the point, you know. I, you know, I did allow comments about the individual just because there was a comments made in reference to about your financial status. So I did allow you to make some comments, but we don't, we don't want this to be a court of a person's character either way. So I did allow the comments that you mentioned just because it was, yours was brought up first. So I think we kind of got the reference. So if you want to continue on with the repairs and things, that'll be great.
Um, yeah, it's basically, I have the letters and we're in the process of trying to get the shower repaired. If he'll, I have a contractor that will do the repairs if he's not on site.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, because this is like kind of civil in that manner. So I'm hoping it could work out. And I know, I think you provided a list to, I think it may have been Barry or someone with a list of improvement. So I did have the opportunity to see the progress that's being made. So it seems to be a tough situation. But, um, yeah, we'll continue to watch. But yeah, it's a kind of a civil situation, you know what I mean? So thank you for coming here today.
Can I ask a question?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. 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 Bowden and then Mr. Wilder.
Mr. V.
Could I just ask you a quick question, sir?
Sure.
I'll wait till you get up here. Of the $8,000 that you've spent on repairs for that unit, could, do you have a breakdown on how much of it was required to be done based on the rental inspection? Because I know the smoke alarms, the fire extinguishers, and some of the other issues, the electrical was detailed because I had a copy of the rental inspection.
Yeah, there was $4,800, I believe, for the electrical repairs, $1,076 for the flooring, $775 for the refrigerator roughly.
But so, so had, had this not been Mr. Bogey's residence, and it would have come in as a rental inspection, this would have been fees you would have incurred just to bring it up to compliance of the, of the inspection from Barry?
Well, I believe Mr. Bogey called the city inspector and asked to have all the units inspected.
Had they been inspected before? Because I know that they were registered correct as rentals?
Correct. And Mr., they weren't, they were only inspected after Mr. Bogey called the complaint.
So, but it was the first time inspection?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Wilder?
Mr. Tony, while you're up here?
Yes.
And I'm only going to ask this because this, this is in my ward, your business, and Mr. Bogey's residence. What, what is an ETA on, on when his shower will be fixed?
Well, I don't have any contractors that are willing to currently go, go to, to do the work. I have a contractor that says he will send me a quote if the tenant's not at home.
Okay.
It's supposed to become the next day or two.
Okay. Thank you.
Right.
Thank you for letting me ask.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council and mayor, city staff for oral presentations going a second time?
Motion to close the hearing, Mayor.
Second.
Motion to close. Public comments.
Public comments.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public comments close. Someone want to do that?
Um, okay, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is 1A, 1 through 1B, seven, I believe it is.
You got it.
Okay. And the, do you want the?
You got the bills payment?
I have, I have them here.
Please read the bills payment.
Good, sir. We got to pay them.
And to place on file the bills payments for February 28th, which is $3,369, 600, $3,669,637.53, and for March 7th, $1,528,324.10.
Second.
All right. So that motion has been made with the second. So I can actually, that's mine. Okay. All right. So a motion has been made with the second. Questions, council? Madam, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bowden?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Brighter?
Yes.
Mr. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Fley?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. So the consent agenda was approved. We have a couple of appointments, and I think, Mr. V, you'll be around for a little bit later for number 11. Okay. We have to our International Property Maintenance Board, Sarah Topliff, Carrie Chandler, for reappointments, Anthony Miller, Sherri Jones, and also for the International Property Maintenance Board, and then Rodney Curran for the Plumbing Licensing Examiners and Appeals Board. So we absolutely want to thank them for stepping up and to serve and reserve on these particular boards. And then on number six, is Seth Long here? Seth here? All right. Seth is being appointed to the position of Equipment Operator Two in our Street Department, pending completion of some tests. So we want to thank in advance to Seth Long for joining the City of Waterloo family. So thank you. Could someone please take number two?
Mr. Mayor, now please.
Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing for general obligation bonds, ECP dash UR2, the issuance of not to exceed $3.5 million and zero cents general obligation bonds for essential corporate urban renewal purposes.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda?
David Dreyer, 3145 West Forest Street. There was an article in the Courier by the Chief Financial Officer indicating that the prospect of bonding 40% less over the next four years would delay some needed necessary maintenance. Also stated was the sewer renovation was not included in the city's debt limit. Not sure how that works, as any money that we borrow now from the state is still part of our debt limit. We have to pay it back. It's not free. Included in the article was a statement about road maintenance, which I understood was to be paid for by the 1% sales tax. How many checkbooks and accounts do we have? Council Amos is frustrated about getting the can kicked down the road as I am. Over the years in my career, I saw many government entities do the same thing, kick the can down the road. Different repairs that I observed at the time might cost a penny then were ignored to pay for something, in my opinion, where not needed, a want. So by the time the repairs were absolutely needed, it was the, it was too expensive, so let's build new. I've stated that before, take care of the needs first, not the wants. So this item we're discussing now is over half of the $6 million that was mentioned in the article, and it's just the first one for fiscal year 23. What we hear later, oh, we've got to pay for this because we've got to go past the $6 million or else what? Needs not wants. I suppose a want will be justified somehow as a need. Thank you.
All right. So when we take a look overall, since again, of course, that was on council prior, but since I know Bennett elected as mayor, I think we spent around 90-ish million dollars over the last five years versus 65 million in the years prior with regards to roads, and that was utilization of a number of funding sources that we went out to try to get. I know inherited two bridges that were in mal condition, and through clever work and of our staff, we've been able to start the process of taking care of these bridges. You know, inherited a consent decree with a ton of necessary repairs that were needed and the millions of dollars. And since then, through the work of staff and work, we've been able to go in and start to rectify some of those problems. We can look at the convention center that was in deplorable condition, and now we take a look at the benefit. We take a look overall around this community and how some parts of this community were lacking with regards to fair and adequate housing and blighted properties, and we began the process to work with neighbors and developers to go back in and start the renovation. We just took a look at a couple of our part projects and the pools that cost a lot of money, and we are starting to work with partners to go in and fix parts and areas that had EPA challenges and brownfields, and we are not kicking the can down the road. We are trying to make appropriate steps to prepare this long-range future of our city. We take a look at broadband and going back and seeing how we can put fiber in. We talked about it 20 years ago, but we're going back now, and we are working towards some of this issue. So we don't always necessarily get it right, but we're getting it, and we are moving this community forward at warp speed compared to where we were. So it's easy to take one or two items and say it's not moving, but when you take a look at totality of this council, the council before, we're going in doing stuff. We were talking about backup issues. So we worked to, with, with our departments to take a look at the 63 project. So we are, we're, we're moving forward. We're not kicking the can down the road, but we have multifaceted issues that we need to strategically and methodically work towards. So I give compliments to city staff that are seeing these things and trying to develop solutions, and to the council members that have sat arm-in-arm to try to come up to figure out how we can move this community forward. Mr. Amos, and your frustration?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I, I heard my name utilized as being frustrated and kicking the.
Quote. It was a quote, so.
It was a quote, but what I'm saying is, is I don't think that I was the one that said that.
Yeah.
So it's just, I want to make the record clear that I did not say that I was frustrated. I don't even think, I, I don't relate to using kicking the can down the road. I believe that was one of my other councilpersons that made that reference. So I don't know who quoted that or how they got my name involved with it, but I just wanted to make that perfectly clear.
Yes, sir. I didn't say it. All right. Any other questions about this 3.5? And I think part of this, we have our local, local option sales tax, which is a portion of the money. We talked about that a little bit earlier, that roads and other things. We know that our sewer with the, the SRF fund, that the state government allows us to be able to utilize and, and incur debt, but at a lower rate. So we have a number of different sources, and I won't say we have multiple checkbooks, but this is a complicated city with over 100 million-plus budget. So, yeah, we're going to have to try to figure out and utilize different sources to achieve our goals. Any other public comments on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'd like to make a motion to close hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to adopt a resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $3.5 million and zero cents general obligation bonds.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Mr. Bowden?
Thank you. Now, it's my understanding that this 3.5 million is for the Plaza improvements for the convention center, correct?
Ms. Michelle?
Michelle Whedon, our Chief Financial Officer. That is the primary purpose of this. There are some other projects that are in the works to finish up the second floor that funds will also go to. You may remember that we passed some pretty large change orders to do some necessary other things that weren't planned for in some of those prior projects. So that, that is what this is intended to.
Thank you. Yeah, because I was, when I was looking at your council communication, it's strictly.
I realized that later. I should have said more than just the Plaza. That is the biggest project, but it is not the only thing.
But we could be looking at, but this should be able, would this be enough to fund our bathroom second floor remodels?
Not, this, this will, there's about $5 million worth of projects that I'm aware of today that are not funded. We still need to do a piece of roofing. We still need to do tuck pointing. The Michelle Whedon Memorial bathrooms are not done yet. Every time I put them on the list, they get shoved down the, they get shoved down the priority schedule.
Well, my question is, is that what have we spent so far there?
About 10.
About 10. So.
There'll be about 13 million after we finish the Plaza, the other things. And we, there's some furniture that we have not bought that we need to. I held off on that because we did the change order instead for the catwalk and some other things. So there's other things that we've got to do to make that usable that is included in this.
Because, because as, as we go down, further down, down in our agenda, I mean, the bids came in relatively, well, they're not, no, we're near 3.5.
No. And honestly, we, we planned to only sell 3 million. We always, our attorneys always advise us to hold the hearing a little higher. So that's why you're seeing the three and a half. The plan right now, in the draft CIP that Noel talked with you about earlier, but the plan is for 3 million of a $10 million total issue to be for the convention center.
Although if we, down the road, when we need to do the second floor bathrooms and that, we could be looking at another $2 million.
Yes.
On top of this, and then we're still not done, correct?
Right.
Okay.
But we've made, I think we have to remember, we've made huge strides with what we've accomplished so far.
That's beautiful.
There's more to do, but we're making progress. And, yeah.
And we're still trying to find additional dollars to help defer some of the costs. So hopefully, we'll be hearing some announcements, hopefully, within the near future of some additional dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
I remember hearing something about, I think, Mr. Bowden, you brought it up at our first or second meeting, about building that bridge or that skywalk that should have been included in the original design, but it wasn't. And was that an architectural, like, are they going to share that cost? I remember that question being asked, but I don't remember if we ever got an answer.
About the skywalks, where are we? About the skywalks, where are we at?
Actually, it's a catwalk that goes around the, the $250,000 change order on the catwalk. Or was that the skywalk?
I think you must be referring to the, the catwalk, which is just for maintenance inside that, the roof, I don't know what to call it, the roof line. I'm going to call it that, where the lights are.
Yeah, so, so the question is, were we going to share that cost or no? Okay.
I'm sorry, share the cost?
Boy, he just shook his head no, so.
Okay, you got your answer.
Yes.
We love to share it, who are we going to share?
Yeah, if you got somebody that wants to help, we want to know their name.
And, and a good thing we're starting to see, I think the pool tournament is there. So starting to see things pick up a little bit more.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, could I add one comment?
Yes, sir.
Didn't we see a, a good taxable, a little change there about how much taxable hotel motel tax kind of thing there? Someone mention that?
Well, okay, so we, we just received our most recent quarterly payment of hotel motel tax, which hotel motel is, does appear to be rebounding from the pandemic. So that's exciting. It, that I believe is for the quarter, September or October, November, December. And we didn't have a whole lot going on at the convention center yet because it was under construction, but there were a few activities and yes, it, it did rebound. We had, actually for that quarter of the year, our payment was the highest it's been. So that's a little glimmer of really positive news, which we're always excited to share.
Right.
And as, and a indirect example, we had a situation where we needed about space for about 88 people the other day. And they were able to house about 20, 20 plus folks, but the hotels were completely full here. So that's a, a good sign in the uptick. And as Mr. Childs indicated, that's going to be continuation of more revenue that's generated in some of these accounts as well. So hopefully things will continue, no, things will continue turning in the right direction, so. Any other questions, comments? Thank you for your efforts downtown too, sir. I know you've been engaged. So we have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Because I'm going to take number three, like Mr. Bozen.
Oh, yeah, I'd be more happy to thank you for
Since he kicked you out the last time.
I was just going to take the shorter one, but I'll just take this one. Motion to receive, file and approve a publication of notice of public hearing and request by top notch tile and construction for a site plan amendment to the M2P planned industrial district to allow for the construction of a 4,800 square foot building as phase one of three future phases, which total 19,200 square feet for future building expansions at property located northeast of 2510 Levercy Road on Warp Drive.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to comment to this item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Like to make a motion to close the hearing and, and, and adopt the recommendation of approval of the planning program and zoning commission.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
I'd make a motion to receive, file and consider and pass for the first time in ordinance amending ordinance number 5079 as amended City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to section 10 dash four dash four, approving a site plan amendment to the M2P planned industrial district to allow for the construction of 4,800 square foot building as phase one of three future phases for a total of 19,200 square feet for future building expansions of property located northeast of 2510 Levercy Road on Warp Drive.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Council questions about construction on Warp, Warp Drive?
Mr. Mayor?
Sir?
Is there a time constraint on this?
I was going to wait till we get to the end of that, but no. And has there been any, any objections, anyone?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So as you may recall, this is part of the Waterloo Air Rail Park on the west side of the airport that we opened up over 300 acres. Warp Drive is the first road that we built in there using 50% rise funds, 50% city match of TIF funds to construct this. So this would be the first building built on Warp Drive. The planning commission did recommend approval. We have had no opposition to the request. And I believe there is a timeline to start in the next agenda item under the development agreement for phase one.
Thank you.
Mr. Bozen is asking you, these folks need to get started here. And if there's any objection, so just cut it, make it simple, kind of, right?
Kind of, and we shouldn't, I mean, we're just changing the zoning, right?
This is the site plan amendment and the next agenda item will be the development agreement. The development agreement notes that he'll start six months from the date of this approval and be done within 12 months.
Perfect.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion to file and consider this first time. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to spend the rules.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Yes, sir.
I can make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
And Mr. Boyd?
Oh, sorry, and Mr. Boyd?
See, out of, out of sight, out of mind, huh? Just forgot about you. Number four, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and as the sale and conveyance of property located on the easterly end of Warp Drive to top notch Tile and Construction LLC in the amount of $1 and approval of a development and minimum assessment agreement in the amount of $250,000 for the development of a 4,800 square foot building with additional phases.
A motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the sale and conveyance of city owned property located southeast of the intersection of Levercy Road and Lone Tree Road in the amount of $1 to top notch Tile and Construction LLC authorizing Ameren City Clerk to execute necessary documents.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Council questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
How long will the abatement be on this particular property?
Mr. Anderson?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. So it's a phase project. So for phase one, he'll receive the free land to begin construction. If he builds the phase two as anticipated, then he'd be eligible for five years at 50%. And then as we move to phase three and phase four, we would look at those size of buildings and look at additional rebates at that time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Am I correct, Noel, that any money that's, that's going to be coming back is going to stay in the TIF? Outside of the land value?
I mean, you have, you'd have a portion going to debt service. There's a small amount that goes to schools and county, but then the rest would stay in the TIF for this, at this time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a development and minimum assessment agreement in the amount of $250,000 with top notch tile and construction LLC and authorizing Ameren City Clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Boyd?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number five, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Greider?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing and as for the fiscal year 2023, budget maximum property tax levy hearing.
Second. That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now open. Is there anyone that would like to speak to this item on the agenda?
David Dray, 3145 West Forest Street. I need to do a reading here for a second. The City of Waterloo Goals, number three, reduce the city's property levies through a responsible balance of cost reduction in city operation and increases in taxable property valuations to ensure that Waterloo is a competitive, affordable and livable city. I don't understand what I'm reading and I would appreciate enlightenment. The paper states passing a maximum levy of 7.01% for residential and 5.48% for commercial and industrial. Is there a state not to exceed percentage? This often, this item on the agenda states a 9.43% request. In the paper, it said 7.01%. Paper also stated the debt service levy is not included. So that means any money we borrow is not included in our debt balance, et cetera. And it's not included in what we're going to pay off with the tax money you get from us. Revenue was up in the fiscal year budget 2023 of over $600,000. This is a projection, I, I believe. So what does one do if it doesn't come true? Would it be more prudent to go on facts, not projections? In other words, what you took in last year is what you want to balance your budget on, not what you might get, and that's, that's icing on the cake. I know not only will our taxes go up, but our cost of living, as it indicates increases in ambulance revenue, golf revenue, and franchise fees, which is a tax, no matter how, what term you put on it. I also know a pretty large increase in liability insurance and workers' compensation. Does anyone have an answer for that as far as excess exposure claims? Why did our insurance have to go up so much? A large, pretty large, excuse me. I get a modest increase every year. Awesome. A large increase usually is caused by hopefully correctable excess usage. Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, I need to, I need to apologize to you, Mr. Amos. I misread the article. It was not you. Good man. Was you? Of course.
You get confused.
Forrest Dilavu, 17, Forrest Dilavu. Are you done beeping me?
Nah, it's the, it's the spirit of Kelly in the room right now.
Okay, put it on hurry up here, okay. Forrest Dilavu, 1725 Huntington Road. As you go into this budget, and I have watched the paper, there are a lot of people being hired. I don't know how many are replacements. I don't know how many are new. But I think you need to hold the line. We, we look across the street at the county, they're doing, I think, a good job for the taxpayers of Waterloo. The state of Iowa, I believe, is doing a good job for the taxpayers. And I would urge you to do everything you possibly can. Things are tough out there and they're getting tougher. I sat at lunch today and watched the price of fuel go up 30 cents in an hour, you know? And I have renters who can't afford to pay their heating bills. I am paying them for them and putting in, letting them pay me back. It's, it's not easy out there. Those people at the bottom are hurting real bad. And I would encourage you to do your share and do with less. That's what they're having to do. They're dialing down, they're putting on sweaters and coats and stuff sitting around the house. And it's not fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dilavu. And Michelle, you just want to quickly, about the maximum, maximum levy. So it's clear to folks what we're doing today and that this is not the finale.
Michelle Weedner, Chief Financial Officer. Yeah, this hearing is an interesting one. This is newly added to our budget process for a couple of years ago. So we're required to have a first hearing, which is what we're going to have today. And it's called the maximum property tax levy hearing. And by state law, it does not include the debt service levy, so that's why it doesn't. It's not that we're not going to have one, it's just not included in this particular request. The numbers that were mentioned, the, the hearing notice that was published does indicate a 9.43% increase in total property tax collections. I do know that the county and others also had increases. I don't, I don't recall the counties, if it was maybe 5% that theirs will go up. And that's partly based on increased property value. The county, of course, picks up all the cities in the county where we just have Waterloo. Then to convert that to how much any individual's taxes will go up, it's an estimate this year. The assessor did revalue residential properties, so I can't speak to that part. Each and, each and every property owner may have gotten a different increase or decrease. I don't, but we've picked an average of about 5.72%. If we assume that, and again, this, this hearing is the top that we will be able to do. Good, I have to be quiet. That, I lost my place. So in that, that would translate to about a 7% increase for a residential property that happened to have the average valuation increase of 5.72%. So that's kind of a theoretical number, but some of you may have had a property that went up by that amount and that would be your increase. And I think commercial was about 5%. And that, there's a difference there, which I would like to point out. That's because we had the state rollback changed and increased the portion of a residential property that's taxable. They didn't, they did not do that for a commercial. So commercial kind of comes out with a less increase this year compared to residential, completely beyond our control that's set by the state on this. And multi-residential, again, still sees a decrease because they're, they're trying to bring those down from a commercial to the same as a residential, so that continues to decline. So that's why there's so many different percentages that are involved to get to this particular amount. And it is not the final hearing and it is not the total tax levy.
So Michelle, just a really quick question, because we heard about the state being mentioned. So right now, the City of Waterloo, with regards to the commercial rollback, how is that impacting this year's budget? How much is that total?
Yeah, so the, the rollback replacement, which was part of the law change that came in in about 2013, that was frozen for us this year. And, well, supposed to be frozen for us. Now the state has decided to phase it out over a period of eight years. So we will lose about 300,000 this year because of that. It's about 1.5 million that we will receive, but it was about 1.8 million last year. So just to cover our same costs, we have a $300,000 gap to try to fill.
And so that's one change right now, $300,000. And then as it was mentioned a little bit earlier from one of our speakers who owns, you know, individual rental properties, how does, with regards to multifamily or multi, what do you call it?
Multi-residential.
Can you explain how that portion has shifted the last couple of years?
It's come down quite a bit and I'm trying to remember the percentage. I think it's taxable at about 63% of its value this year. It would have been 100% taxable before the tax law changed a few years ago. And so it's It would have been a hundred percent taxable before the tax law changed a few years ago, and so it's dropped by forty percent approximately in that amount of time, and that will continue to decline. Right now, residential, I think we're at about fif- can't remember, fifty-four, fifty-six percent for this year. I got too many years in my head. But, you know, it's still got a ways to go for those two to match.
And so when we take a look at the, our speaker and what he currently pays for taxes, and then we take a look at state changes, how does, how does, where does, where does the shift in what the state changed, how does that have an impact on the residents? Because it's, you know-
It definitely raises the taxes to fund this, to fund the same services. It, it obviously takes a higher tax levy because the state is removing a source of revenue.
Yep, so, y- you know, just to understand the con- you know, the con- the, um, context, that one impacts the other, impacts the other. And so we can be on the state level and tell people, we've cut this. But yeah, it is cut, but it has to come from somewhere, from the folks that are providing the services, uh, every day, so. Um, thank you for that. Counsel, do you have any, any, any questions? Uh, we can close the hearing, can't we?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and receive and file oral and written comments.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The hearing is now closed.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the maximum property task, tax askings as defined under Iowa Code, Section three eight four dot one fi- one five A, in the amount of thirty-nine million ninety-four thousand four hundred eighty-six dollars, an increase in applicable collections of three million three hundred sixty-seven thousand seven hundred and five dollars, or nine point four three percent for the budget year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I, I do think it's important, um, Ms. Weidner, just approximately, what percentage of our budget is personnel? So, so it's-
So re- repeat what she said, so you-
Yeah, so, so the cost of personnel is about eighty percent-ish of our budget approximately. All right, and listen, I'm, I'm paying Mid-American a lot of money to heat my house. Apparently, I need new windows. Um, and I'm paying more for gas, uh, I'm paying more for childcare. I own property here in Waterloo, but I think it would be a disservice to just say that it's as simple as putting on another sweater. That the city is, is not cold. The city is trying to provide services, and a lot of folks last year painted some of us up here with a broad brush about how we feel about city personnel. So I, I guess my question is, if, if you want this number to be lower, what personnel are you willing to cut? Is it police officers? Is it firefighters? Is it librarians? Is it parks people? Is it our IT director? Is it, who, who are we going to cut? Because I'm not seeing any fat. We have among the smallest workforce for being one of the largest cities, and our folks do a incredibly fine job. So it's, it's not as simple as a, as a household budget. Because we are, we are expected to provide essential services, and I will guarantee you, and we would rightly deserve to be castigated if fire trucks showed up a minute later, if police officers did not, did not solve crimes, if we didn't do the things that we are being asked to do. So, uh, to compare this budget to a household budget is not apples-to-apples comparison. That is not fair. Thank you.
Mayor? Yes, sir.
I just think it's, it's important to understand that this is, as Michelle mentioned, the maximum tax levy, and I don't think anybody that's sitting in this house is going to agree with this. We're gonna, we're gonna work, the department heads are gonna work, everyone's gonna work to decrease this. We just had to set it tonight. Let's move forward, get the maximum tax levy set, and let's, let's buckle down and find the savings and bring back a workable budget to, to, to this council and, and to the citizens.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Childs? Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foys?
Give Malcolm a yes, but I think you'll mute it.
Mr. Foys, I think you froze.
Oh.
All right, we got it.
Sorry, I'm being quiet.
You're right, thank you. So we got work to do, uh, before that, uh, final, final date. Uh, six, seven, and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving a professional services agreement with H.R. Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed twenty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-two dollars in conjunction with the Waterloo Pavement Management Plan fiscal year twenty twenty through, twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-nine, and authorizing the mayor to execute said documents. Next is a resolution approving a development agreement with Hydrate Chemical Company in conjunction with the construction of a new thirteen thousand two hundred square foot office building with a minimum assessment agreement of one million five hundred and sixty-two thousand seven hundred dollars to the current assessed value of the property and city and tax rebates of six years at fifty percent, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document. And next is a resolution approving a professional services agreement with AECOM Technical Services, Inc. of Waterloo, Iowa, in an amount not to exceed one hundred and eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for engineering services in conjunction with the fiscal year twenty twenty-three Sunnyside Creek Improvements, Wet Detention Pond and Channel Stabilization Project Contract Number ten sixty-two, and authorizing the mayor to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, questions about this, anyone? Counsel?
I'm Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bozen?
I just, I just had a, a request for Noel on number seven. And, and the only reason I, I bring this up is because of, of the Courier article. And, uh, and I'm really happy that Hydrate has chosen to expand here. But, uh, the Courier article stated that they received their tax incentives on February eighteenth, including city incentives. And would it be possible, when something like this is coming down the pike, for you to reach out to counsel on an individual basis? Let us know that this is coming forward, so I don't read about it in the Courier and then have to send you an email asking you what our incentives we're agreeing to? As, because people ask me, and then I didn't have an answer for them. So all I'm, all I'm asking that in, in the future, would it, if it's possible, just to, these are coming down the pike, just reach out to us and let us know they're coming, and, and, and part of the agreement is like fifty percent for six years or whatever.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director, definitely. Um, Hydrate was working on this, and you can see that there's a number of, of phases that they're working on, so we are still gathering the details of this first phase to move ahead with the development agreement. The state process went a little bit quicker, but we'll definitely reach out next time, so you know it's coming ahead of time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foys?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Thank you. Nine and ten, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Nichols?
I'd like to make a motion adopting a resolution approving the purchase of property located at two-three-two Ricker Street, uh, Waterloo, Iowa, for the sum of, uh, twenty-three thousand dollars and zero cents from Abigail Land Holdings, LLC, and eleven TIA, uh, LLC, and authorize the mayor to sign the purchase and sale agreement and all necessary documents. And number ten, resolution approving the supplemental agreement for the City of Waterloo twenty thirty vision and strategic plan in the amount of twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, and authori- authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute said document.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Uh, questions about these items? And is, is Rudy on somewhere?
He was here.
Yes. I have a second question for you in a second, Mr. Yes, sir.
David Dray, thirty-one forty-five West Forest Street. Uh, I have a question on nine and ten.
Yes, sir.
Um, first off, uh, why are we buying this property? Uh, do we have a destiny for it? And number ten, um, supplemental agreement for the City of Waterloo twenty thirty vision, the strategic plan, with who? Who's getting the twenty-four thousand seven hundred and fifty-five dollars? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mr. Jones, uh, number ten, I believe, is, uh, de novo. But number nine, Mr. Jones, can you tell us about, uh, the purchase and the vision?
Sure. Rudy Jones, Community Development Director. Uh, most of us should be aware of the three new houses that the City of Waterloo and Hawkeye Community College had a partnership with in building those three new units. And then we realized that there were a number of vacant properties within a block of those three units, and we thought it made sense for us to complement the new development that was going on in that neighborhood with trying to address those vacant units. So we did a quick survey of the neighborhood and found that there were seven vacant properties within a rock's throw of those three units. So we evaluated the need for addressing those vacant units, and especially when some of the vacant units within the community are not being adequately addressed. There might be, uh, private individuals, private LLCs that are getting those properties through the tax sale, uh, status process and under-invested in those units. So we thought we would, uh, begin to, uh, acquire those, put, uh, federal dollars in there and get new home buyers in those sooner than later.
So, so, so that's, that's all, that's all good, uh, and that's all great. Um, from a improvement of community, number two, housing is important. Connecting and celebrating neighborhoods is part of our strategic goal. But, but this also does something economically. So we seen, um, both of those houses on Newell's, three houses on Newell Street, that's what, we had an initial investment into those houses with some partners. I think it's around roughly one forty for one, one forty, close to one forty for the next, that's two eighty, plus this last one is a hundred and seventy, which equals four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we've had a return on investment that is three to fourfold based upon what the initial investment is. So you're buying this property, which is around the corner in that same area, for twenty-three. What do you think, what do you think the value can be once we put something on there as well?
We've received an appraisal of approximately a hundred and nineteen thousand.
Right.
Now, with the way that building materials are continuing to go up and interest rates on the horizon probably going up, we'd probably need to get in there sooner than later to keep that rehabilitation cost as low as possible.
So, so, and, and, you know, I think it's, I think it's, uh, important for us to tell the story, of course, yes. We're, we're going in, we're working, we're helping the neighborhood, we're creating good stories, but we're creating some decent capital. And so some of it may be realized a little bit later, what we spoke, spoke on earlier, but you know, you're talking about homeownership, you're talking about fivefold. You spend twenty-three, put fifteen, twenty in it, you're going to double, uh, that invest, that initial investment that was made.
Yes. Uh, some of us might have, uh, seen the property, I think it was two-eleven, Newell Street, that just had fire damage. So our take is, we need to investigate to see if the house is salvable, if the owners are going to go back in there and build, and if not, that's what we would do. We would take a look and see if we can get back in there and get that house back on the market sooner than later, because we have a whole lot of houses with various conditions and reasons why they're vacant that nothing is being done with.
So, so whether it's, you know, Audubon, whether it's Edison, whether it's, uh, Ricker Street, whether it's Newell Street, whether it's moving out further, whether it's, I think, Lincoln Ridge, near, near Amesboro, these are, uh, strategic investments that
Right.
we're partnering with in most, but also developers are starting to step up and see that there's a value uh, to building in some of these areas.
Yes, and we're trying to maximize the cluster effects, similar to what's been done over in the Walnut Neighborhood, and similar to what's going to happen over in the Church Road neighborhood. So we're not just kind of, every place, we want to go where we can maximize those resources.
This is a goodwill, but it's an investment
Yes.
and reinvestment. Mr. Amos?
Um, Mr. Jones, one, one of the things that, you know, I've been on council quite a while, and one of the things that I do know is, is this is not something that is not tried. We have done this in other parts of the city, correct?
Yes.
As far as right close here to downtown Waterloo. Would you speak on that a little bit?
Yes. Uh, back after the flood and the housing crisis of two thousand and eight, when we received federal dollars, we were able to, uh, do a lot of new construction and rehabilitation in neighborhoods that had no investment in decades, maybe. And so one of those neighborhoods was the one thousand eleven hundred, uh, block of, um, Lafayette Street, where those two blocks, uh, at that point in time had about thirty percent occupancy on the north side of the street, and once we were able to take those dollars and move in and do, uh, demolition, uh, rehabilitation, new construction, we were able to increase that occupancy level to about eighty percent. So we were able to address every property on the north side of the street with the exception of one, hint, hint.
All right, let's go Mr. Childs, then we'll come to Mr. Nichols, then we'll go to Mr. Bozen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Jones?
Yes, sir.
This is federal funds, correct?
Yes, sir.
So hopefully that answers a lot of questions there. This is federal funds. This is, uh, what community development does. It uses the federal funds and invests that federal funds into our environment here in Waterloo.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Nichols?
So this may be a question for Rudy or for Noel. Have there been any developments on our working with the county to kind of, uh, take more benefit of the tax sale process?
Uh, we are strengthening that relationship, and we hope that we can begin and continue to get in front of that process and hopefully get those housing units before we have to buy them at twenty to thirty thousand dollars. Those dollars could and probably should be used to address the entire rehab.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Greider?
Yes. Uh, Mr. Jones, I just want to say thank you for, for the work that your team has done, the intern, I believe, you had from you and I, and, and just bringing this to light for us, and, um, I drove by this property. I'm really looking forward to, uh, a glow up for it. Uh, and I, I think that will be great. I also want to say, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm really excited that you're including the Youth City Council in item number ten. Um, I love that program. One of the first things I did with the city was serve as a faculty advisor, so I'm really excited to see how the youth can pay, play a part in our future vision plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, didn't mean to call you out the back room. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foys?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, eleven and twelve, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I'd like to adopt the following resolutions. Uh, the first is a resolution approving a word of contract to Vith Construction Corporation of Cedar Falls, Iowa, in the amount of one million six hundred ninety-two thousand five hundred dollars, and approving the contract bond and certificate of insurance in conjunction with the Five Sullivan Brothers Convention Center Plaza renovation project, and authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute sa- said document. And next is a resolution approving the sales order with Rebicini Studios, Inc., in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars to complete the final design for the Sullivan Brothers Family Memorial.
Second. All right, uh, that motion has been made with the second. Uh, any questions? I had some explanation about this. I was asked by one of our council members to kind of explain, so. Um, eleven, uh, we have been working with the Sullivan family of, and, and even in the bigger, broad perspective, to do a Veterans Way project. Um, you know, we often, as a community, uh, are left subject to being branded by, uh, various media outlets and other perspectives, but the City of Waterloo has an incredible veteran story, and we've been trying to work to secure some private funding, uh, to be able to tell that story from, uh, you know, uh, living lamps underneath the overpass to, um, uh, um, you know, working to create a more walk, walkable and bikeable streetscape to the work that's in this one that's going to be done outside of the convention center in the form of the Sullivan Brothers Memorial, uh, which is going to have some orientations to the Guthrie Theater- which is going to have some orientations to the Guthrie Theater in Minneapolis with lighted panels, new concrete along that area that's going to tell that story of the Sullivan family, but also on the other sides of the panel talk about the people within this community that have dedicated their lives to making this a better place as well. So this will be something different. It's going to create an experience downtown for people to come in to stay. It's going to tell an incredible story of service and sacrifice of veterans, and it's going to tie into this entire Veterans Way concept that we're hoping to achieve. So we've had multiple partners that have worked with us over the course of the last year, and we know council has supported as well. But this will be something special that we can all celebrate and take pride in. But this is just one piece of several different pieces that are happening to tell a story and keep people downtown and continue to spend some of those dollars as well. And the 12 are the studios that's going to help with the design and the panels and those things as well. So a lot of concrete, a lot of storytelling, and we've been working with Kelly Sullivan and the family. And the goal is that, you know, a lot of this portion of it will be privately funded as well. So pretty exciting, so.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just had a question, two questions, actually, that had to do with if Noel could get me some information on alternate one. I was concerned on the $33,000 each for the pedestals, at four pedestals, I was concerned at the, we were putting four benches in there at $8,000 a bench. That seemed a little high, and then the memorial plaques for 5,500 each, and we got two of those. So if you could give me some information on that, I would appreciate it. And then I was curious on this contract, because we have a completion date, a substantial completion date, but there's nothing in there as far as penalties for not completing it on time? Am I correct in that, Noel?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm worried about that, and not that I don't have faith in the construction corporate, V construction. I'm worried about it because we have, the last three days in September, we have the League of Cities Conference here at the Convention Center, and I just want to see that done before the
Yeah, which is the goal, to have that done by then. The challenge we're having, whether it's steel or whether it's the murals, is being able to get that in right now with gas prices and just our overall economy. So the goal is to have it done by now. So we didn't put penalties in there just because there's so many unknowns, but what we can probably do is make sure that we have timely project updates, so that we'll be very aware. We're, you know, we're working, who's overseeing the concept? Kuiper? Is it, who's overseeing the work? Yeah.
Sandy.
Okay, okay. So, yeah, you're right on that, Mr. Bozen, but that's the goal.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
And Mr. Amos?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Number 13, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Amos?
I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo Code of Ordinances by repealing Section 7, Exceptions of Chapter 5b, weeds Title VII, public ways and property in enacting in lieu thereof a new code section.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Questions about this item? Anyone? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
And Mr. Childs?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Summers are coming. Are there any time constraints on this, or?
Spring is about to come.
Not yesterday.
So, does this need to, we need to move forward, or I don't, what are you trying to say, sir?
I think we should ask for that.
Well, you know, you at least got to get up to the microphone and tell us that, so could you please step up? We'll let you use a short mic.
He can't use that mic.
We'll get you a little camera.
Martin Peterson, Legal Department. Yeah, just given the fact that spring is almost here, I think folks are getting ready to plant their gardens, so it would be helpful if the second and third readings were waived.
All right, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
And Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
And Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Let's go number 14, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to receive, file, and consider and pass for the second time an ordinance amending the City of Waterloo traffic code by adding subsection 157b Greyhound Drive, both sides of the street from West Ridgeway Avenue to Sergeant Road, Highway 63, to section 551 prohibit parking at all times on these streets.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. We've had conversation about this before, but any question, convo?
I have.
Yes, sir.
I'm just concerned that, I'm in support of this, but I'm concerned that we are just moving the problem. And I think personally that that whole area out there should be no parking. If you go out there at any given time, you'll see tractor trailers all the way down to the Social Security Office. But then you'll also see that people come and dump their trailers on those side streets. They'll drive in there, they'll drop a trailer off, and they might live in Waterloo, but they take their tractor home, leave the trailer there. And those streets are a lot narrower than Greyhound. And I truly believe that we should be, I just don't think we're going to solve the problem. We're going to move the problem, number one. And number two, in order to enact this, we need to, and we need to know there's going to be enforcement. Because, and Mr. Bennett brought that up when we talked about this the last time, when he was in Cedar Falls and out there by Target Distribution, it didn't solve the problem because there wasn't enforcement at first. So we need to know that we're going to have enforcement, and I truly believe that we need to stop, not to move the problem. I think I'd be in favor personally of including that whole area, that's no parking, or at least understand why we're not including that whole area.
Is that a question?
They are both questions.
So I know we have Mr. Youngblood here, I know, who is this, Sandy, or please?
Sandy Griggo, Traffic Operations Director. To answer your question, we are going to bring it back, the other streets in the area. We just wanted to, John and I have talked, and Harold Youngblood and I have talked, and we just wanted a little more discussion about the other streets, like Athens and Cyclone Drive. But that is going to be brought back to you.
Is there a timeframe on when you think you're going to be bringing this back? Are we going to have a work session, or are you just going to bring it back before it's as a resolution?
If you would like a work session, we can do that in two weeks. If not, we can bring it back in two weeks.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to just bring it back in two weeks.
I mean, we can do Greyhound today.
We got to get this passed today.
We'll have simultaneous.
We could do Greyhound Drive today because we can't put signs up until it's published.
Right.
And then, you know, and we can get posts in the ground now, so.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I heard Councilman Bozen asked the question, what is the enforcement mechanism? What is the enforcement? Is it?
For parking violations?
Yes, for these semis parked out there.
I mean, obviously, we can cite for, I'm sorry.
Who are you, sir?
Dr. Joel Fitzgerald, Chief of Police, City of Waterloo. Obviously, we are able to cite for those type violations. I believe we're not the only entity in the city that can issue parking citations. However, again, if something is brought to our attention and we don't have a higher priority call, we would certainly enforce the violation. Also, we would make the NPL or officer in the area aware of the problem, if they're not already, and have them frequently checked during times that they are not occupied with another call.
They can ask.
All right, so we're good. Madam Clerk, on the second reading.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
And Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to move to suspend the rules.
Second. Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
And Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move to receive, file, and consider and pass for the third time and adopt said ordinance.
Second. A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Childs?
Yes.
Mr. Greider?
Yes.
Ms. Wilder?
Yes.
Mr. Foyce?
Yes.
Mr. Bozen?
Yes.
And Mr. Nichols?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, thank you. We have our, see, you were supposed to say something when I asked, but yes, sir. Because technically, we closed all of the voting, but I'll give you a quick second.
Harold Youngblood, 643 East Griffith Road. Being an owner of a large amount of property out there yet, when you have that discussion about closing off parking for all of the area, I would like to be part of that. My concern is, I'm great with the semis not being able to park there because of, number one, safety issues, number two, the trash. Unfortunately, Love's has no control over that. They've done a great job with their site, but the truck drivers that aren't their customers sometimes, they leave a considerable amount of trash.
So why don't we do this, so Sandy, Randy, if you want to get Mr. Bozen and Mr. Childs in on some type of communication and conversation, why don't we do that?
Okay.
And then bring something to the council, if we can, in a couple of weeks, if not the first of April. But let's have some conversation, because we'll go from there, because technically, the next portion is not being discussed right now, and I hate to be out of order and have a conversation, but let's get some engagement and conversation. It could be, it doesn't have to necessarily be in person, it could be some type of conference call to begin the discussion, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, number 15?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Well, I thought you wanted the 15 read.
Yeah, it's going to be tabled, maybe, but yes, sir. Who did you discuss with this? Did you discuss with the council member that knows? Or you just?
I don't think the actual regulations made the public agenda items.
Oh, okay.
So due to having the information forthright and readily accessible, Mr. City Attorney is asking that it be tabled.
Yes, one meeting.
Two weeks, one meeting. All right, so, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to table number 15.
Second.
A motion has been made with the second. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Paperwork wasn't uploaded.
No, you mean postpone, right? Postpone.
Postpone. Thank you, Mr. Childs. Make a motion to postpone.
So duly noted, we'll make a friendly postponement.
Yes.
It was second by, who was it second by?
This girl.
This woman?
This woman, this lady, me, I, Nia.
Hit me in trouble. All right, once again, Madam Clerk, I think somebody, Madam Clerk?
Just to clarify, are we postponing this to our next meeting?
Yes.